Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome on the call this meeting. Uh, Committee of the Whole Meeting to the Town of Drumheller for December ninth to order at four thirty. Uh, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being livestreamed to the public and recorded in accordance with the council procedural bylaws. Um, do we have any announcements from the committee for this evening? Counselor Kalapa?
I'll just, uh, like to say December, uh, thirteenth is Cram the Cruiser. It's a, uh, charitable event done by emergency services in town. Uh, so stop by Canadian Tire between ten AM and and four PM on December thirteenth with, uh, non-perishable food item. To donate to the food bank, uh, Drumheller Fire Department is there along with the RCMP. It's sounds like a great event.
Thank you, Counselor Kalapa. Anyone else? Okay, I'll go, uh, congratulations to us all for wrapping up our budget deliberations. Thank you, administration, for the excellent job outlining the budget for us. Uh, we've, we've, uh, gained a lot of valuable insight throughout this process, and I believe I speak on behalf of everyone that we're very grateful for all the work that was done there so far. And thank you for that. Counselor Hardy?
Uh, just a reminder that this Friday into Monday, the Aquaplex will be closed to the public to finish off the last portion of the hot tub project. Cruiser lane and a, uh, important epoxy coating on the concrete deck to ensure waterproofing and a safe grippy layer on the pool deck.
Thank you, Counselor Hardy. Anyone else? Counselor McNeil?
Yes, uh, this weekend coming up on the twelfth and thirteenth of December is the final weekend for Christmas in the Cooley. If you're interested in attending, visit the Atlas website and, uh, get your tickets.
Thank you for that. It's a great event. Love it out there. Anyone else? Okay, so then, uh, we'll go for the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or amendments to tonight's agenda? Counselor, uh, Zritsky?
Yeah, I move that, uh, we adopt the agenda for the December ninth, twenty twenty-five Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Zritsky. Can I have a second here? Counselor Miller, thank you. All in favor? Carry. All right, so then we're on to, now go on to, uh, item four point one point one, Public Participation Policy, number P O one two five C.
Thank you, worship. Uh, so, back in twenty seventeen, the government of Alberta mandated that all municipalities adopt a public participation policy, which was implemented by the addition of section two sixteen point one in the MGA, or Municipal Government Act. Public participation policies were established to determine when and how the public should be involved in the decision-making process, ensuring a balance between council, authority, and accountability to their citizens. Pursuant to this requirement, the Town of Drumheller adopted Public Participation Policy C dash zero three dash one eight, which is attached in the appendix on July ninth, twenty eighteen. So pursuant, pursuant to this policy, the town, uh, does, we've committed to review the policy every three years. An internal review was conducted in twenty twenty-one and no amendments were made at that time. Uh, we have just recently completed an internal review again, and, uh, following this review, uh, we've done a bit of a revamp of the policy. Not only the policy, but also identifying, uh, procedure as well as a bit of a framework around the different levels, uh, that we've identified in accordance with the International Association of Public Participation, or I A P two, which is, uh, renowned across, across, um, Canada, and I think it's actually across North America, to be honest. Uh, so, following this comprehensive review, uh, administration did, um, you'll see the attached policy and procedure in the appendices. Overall, uh, what it does is it does incorporate the I A P two principles. And, uh, earlier in the year, we did do some training directly with counselors and with, uh, key staff members on what exactly that framework is and how, how to go about utilizing the tools, um, that are within that toolbox. So what administration has brought forward today is that new, is the new direction. We are recommending that the previous policy be repealed and replaced with the new policy, number P zero one two five C. We intend to concurrently approve, uh, the procedure, which is an administrative procedure, but we do feel that it is important for council in this specific instance to be aware of what that procedure is, even though it is administrative. So, uh, the policy itself is a high-level strategic document and is established by council. It is, uh, the procedure itself, though, is the step-by-step guide, which establishes how we implement the policy here at the administrative level. So together, the new policy and procedure aims to provide clarity on the following. When an initiative requires public participation, what kind of public participation is required, and when reporting to council shall be undertaken. So, uh, financial impact on this, i- it is minimal. Uh, we are already doing a lot of public participation in various levels. Um, it is a part of our operating budget within our marketing and communications, uh, department. If we do go above and beyond this at any given moment, it's normally a part of a specific project, which is in that section of their operating or capital project budgets. Strategic policy alignment, uh, this policy is in adherence to the Municipal Government Act, specifically section two sixteen point one, and it supports council's commitment to transparency, accountability, and informed decision-making. Our communication strategy on this, once it's approved, is we will, uh, inform the public of the policy by updating it on our website. We'll also, uh, be updating our public participation webpage. As well, we are going to be updating our requests for decision templates to use language that more reflects this policy and the commitment to it. We also will be including, uh, P two summaries in our quarterly reports to council. So you're aware as well which projects we are engaging in and at the different levels. So as this is a Committee of the Whole, uh, meeting, our recommended motion forward is that the committee recommends to council the adoption of the public participation policy, P zero one two five C, as presented. So with that, um, attached is the policy. Um, I'm, please, I encourage you all to ask any questions that you may have. Uh, the hope here is that at the Committee of the Whole, we're able to get into more detail, be able to, uh, dig into the questions a little bit, and then make any amendments, um, that are required, and then administration will bring it back to council at, at, uh, council meeting for actual adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselors, Counselors Risky? Oh, sorry. Okay, so, um, thank you, Miss, thank you, Mrs. Campbell. May we have a motion, please? Counselor Zritsky?
I move that the committee recommends to council the adoption of Public Participation Policy number P zero one two five C as presented.
Can I have a second here? Counselor McNeil, thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Zritsky?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, this looks really good. Um, I mean, I've always advocated lots of public participation and decision-making. Uh, I have a few questions, however. First, on page one, where it says scope, and it says, this refers to, or this applies to all Town of Drumheller employees. So that means it does not apply to council? Because council are not employees of the town. Council are employees of the people. We are not, give you an example, we are not directed by the C A O who directs all employees of the town.
Uh, through the chair, thank you. We will, we can add that in.
So it should be employees and council.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's all I would do. Uh, going down to Schedule A on page six. So, I'm not quite sure uh, about the empowering. So we have, you know, involve, uh, inform, consult, involve, collaborate, wonderful. And then it goes down to empower, and it says to place final decision-making power in the hands of the public. I'm not quite sure what that entails. Um, I mean, council is elected by the public to make decisions. Um, we don't have referendums on everything where, I mean, democracy is not quite perfect, because not everybody makes the decisions on everything. So I'm just wondering what, what that means to face, like, I mean, and I'll give you an example, uh, when we were doing budget. Um, I asked people, you know, do you want information on the budget? And they literally said to me, well, no, uh, I elected you. Uh, I think you're logical, reasonable, intelligent, experienced, and you do it, and that's why I elected you. Right? They are not interested in the, the nitty-gritty details of the budget. That's why they elect council to do that. Uh, so I'm just wondering how that fits in and, and why we would have the, you know, is that assuming the final decision-making power in the hands of the public, and we represent the public? If so, that, that's logical, I guess.
Through the chair, uh, Counselor Zritsky, I, which page are you on? I'm, I'm on page six of seven, page ten of thirty-five. Okay, that's what I'm looking at.
Says six of seventeen, and then says seventeen of thirty-five, so.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
So I don't know where it is. Seventeen to thirty-five on the agenda, I guess.
Counselor Kalapa?
Okay, I see it. Thank you. Sorry. So you're speaking to Schedule A in the, the actual framework. Is that correct? So, um, so in there, how, how the I A P two framework works or their principles is, is it's a bit of a scale of, of level of engagement. So at the very minimum, it's, it's within our ma- mind mandate to either inform, consult, involve, collaborate, or empower. It's literally a scale of one to five, and at minimum, we do one. And at maximum, we do empower. Empower is definitely at the far end of the scale. Um, whether or not we ever get to that place, honestly, it is a case-by-case basis where is it something that, like you mentioned, requires a plebiscite, or does it require a referendum? Or does it require a point where it's not just involving or collaborating like a task force, but it's actually providing that, uh, power to make a decision, um, in the hands of whatever the, the entity is. Technically, if you look at an election, that's an empowering engagement where the electors or our residents are the ones that are making that final decision as a whole. So is there a lot of those opportunities within municipal government? Um, I would say they are very rare, um, as municipal action only happens once every four years. So it's more of, this is the framework of I A P T, P two, um, on the gamut of the different levels. Whether or not it's at a one or a two or a three or four or five is going to be decided upon through that go-no-go process, and and the higher up it gets, the more directly we're going to engage with council to help us make that decision. I would guarantee you that if there is anything around above a one or a two, it would be decided upon with council.
Yeah, so al- also on page, uh, da-da-da-da-da, twenty of our agenda, so nine of seventeen of the policy. So it talks about empower, public decision-making, and it talks about public votes on major policy changes, community-wide ballots, um, then participatory, community-led funding allocation decisions, public input on municipal spending priorities. Like, we just went through our budget process, um, and we decided on the budget for the town as elected officials. Is, this seems to be saying, I mean, we have public input, I mean, we listen to people, is that, is that what we're doing? And then it also has boards and committees with decision-making power, um, citizen juries determining project funding. I don't see how that works.
So through the chair, so somewhat like the Drumheller Housing Administration, where that entity is a community-led organization, which we participate on, and they do make decisions around funding allocations. So that's an example of a very strong, um, empowered option of following us as, as a council and our municipal budget process would not necessarily be at this level, because like you've said, you are the elected officials of the municipality, and that decision is made by council, not by individual residents. So again, it's, it's just a different, it's just defining, and, and specifically on, on page nine of seventeen, it's defining some examples of how that would happen. What, what would be an empowerment option, um, process if that was the choice that we went down?
Counselor Kalapa?
Yeah, I think that that's, uh, is my understanding of the reading as well, is that we as an organization determine the level of where we're going to go with public engagement. So if it's a simple bylaw, we may be at a level one for inform or consult. If it's something like when we did the Badlands Community Facility, we may go to the higher levels. Um, I, just from doing the I A P two training, um, last, uh, term, I think it's very important. I think it's a really good thing for council to take part in. It's my one sort of comment about levels of engagement. Uh, it's probably implicit in this, but often a lot of the items in sort of the level one inform would also carry over into the other ones, that we would still continue using those tools if we would go to level three, four, or five. Okay, no, thank you.
That is correct. Yes.
Counselor McNeil?
Yeah, I, um, think that this document is excellent overall, and after having done the training myself, I, uh, can understand certainly the continuum. I did have one question, and I have to find exactly where it is in the document, but it identifies, um, a project lead. And I was curious, um, who that is, or is that somebody within the town, or is that an external contractor? I believe that, uh, phrase is in the procedure itself. So I'm just, I'll try to find that. It was near the top of the procedure. Sure.
So, um, through the chair, I see that on page thirteen of thirty-five.
Yes.
And, uh, what that's referring to is there's a lot of times when an initiative or a project is being done by an individual department, not necessarily by the, by the C A O office, uh, there is a project lead identified. So for example, when we just did the revision of the, uh, community standards bylaw, the project lead on that was, uh, Mr. Trent, uh, Kerr here, our manager of municipal enforcement. So he would have filled that role, and he worked with hand-in-hand with our communications officer, and between the two of them, they completed that public participation process and actually utilized this framework. It was pretty much the first one we've done that utilized the continuum and, and this framework to do that process.
Great, thank you. I just have one more question also, if I may. Um, I read as well, under the stakeholder identification area, indigenous groups, uh, are identified, possibly. And I was just curious if members of the team have, um, any indigenous engagement training.
Uh, through the chair, not that I'm aware of, not specifically, um, besides myself. I've, I've have taken training in my past, um, experiences, uh, but that is something we can look into and, and confirm that for council.
Thank you.
All right, any, anything else? Nobody else? That's all good discussion. I mean, that's what they're doing is changing things around there, so try and include all the things you can find. All right, so are we all in favor of this thing? The motion to, uh, adopt public participation policy? Yes, okay. All right. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on now to item four point one point two, twenty twenty-five Alberta Municipalities Convention and and Trade Show Debrief.
Thank you, worship. Uh, so back on November twelfth to fourteenth, council and myself attended the twenty twenty-five Alberta Municipalities, or Alberta Munis Convention and Trade Show. This is an annual event that's designed to strengthen municipal leadership, influence provincial policy, and build collaborative networks that support Alberta communities. Council participated in a number of education sessions, policy discussions, and advocacy work, including debating resolutions, um, that shaped the Alberta municipalities' priorities with other levels of government. Our report today is, uh, just to provide council the opportunity to publicly share some key highlights from the event. A little bit further, just a little bit more information on it is to why the event and why does it exist? So it is Alberta's largest municipal gathering that brings together elected officials and senior administrators from across the province. It serves several key purposes, including networking to foster connections among mayors, counselors, and administrators, thereby encouraging collaboration and sharing of best practices across communities. It, uh, provides opportunities to engage directly with provincial leaders to ensure Drumheller's interests are represented in provincial decisions. It provides education and professional development opportunities, including workshops, breakout sessions, and, uh, courses even, um, through the Elected Officials Education Program, which helps to build skills in governance, leadership, and emerging topics. Following the convention event, uh, Town Council actually and myself stayed and attended the Elected Officials Education Program course called Council's Role in Budgeting and Finance. The other thing the, uh, event does is it helps us get inside with the policy development and advocacy that the Alberta municipalities does as an entity. So there, they do pass resolutions that allow municipalities to debate and vote on what they are advocating for on our behalfs, and, um, and then take those, those wants and direction from the municipalities to the provincial and sometimes federal government. An example of that was, uh, the electricity distribution resolution that the town actually sponsored for the city of Grand Prairie, who brought it forward, and this was approved at the convention. This is also a good opportunity for information sharing to ensure pressing municipal issues are discussed, and innovative solutions to improve municipal operations and community well-being are explored. The costs associated with the annual conventions are expensed within our existing twenty-five operating budget this past year, and per diems and expenses were reimbursed to council in accordance with the remuneration and expense allowance for mayor and council policy, L S dash C dash zero three. This initiative does, uh, align with our strategic, uh, direction, um, as it does show a commitment to good governance, regional collaboration, and informed decision-making. So with that, um, administration's recommendation after, uh, a bit of a roundtable discussion here would be that the committee accepts the twenty twenty-five Alberta Municipalities Convention and Trade Show Debrief as information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. May I have a motion, please? Counselor Hardy?
I'll move that, uh, committee accepts the twenty twenty-five Alberta Municipalities Convention and Trade Show Debrief as information.
Thank you. This can have a second here. Counselor Miller? Uh, any discussion on that? Counselor Zritsky?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, I, I've attended many, many of these conventions, and I've always found them to be very informative. Um, I, I enjoy the opportunity of meeting with, um, counselors from other municipalities and kind of comparing notes on what we're doing in Drumheller and what they're doing in Pinoka and what they're doing in Vulcan and, and whatever. Uh, my, I guess my highlight of this convention, um, was I, I, I guess I have been maybe taking a lot of stuff for granted over the years in terms of what municipalities have to deal with. And just hearing some of the discussion, uh, some of the sessions that we had, uh, some of the talks by some of the ministers, uh, some of the resolutions, um, and, and watching the new members of council kind of take this information in. I mean, it's stuff that I'd, I'd kind of heard before. Um, but watching the new people on council kind of absorb this, this information was, was very, very enlightening for me, and, and I, I found it, um, very gratifying to see the people that we have on council now really getting into, you know, some of this stuff that uh, I, I think they didn't really realize, uh, when they, when they decided to get on council, so. So that was the highlight to me is is this learning of experience that I observed. Um, with the people on council.
Thanks for saying that. It was, uh, it was quite enlightening and it was, uh, it helped to make us all a lot more, uh, comfortable. I know it did with me anyways and in my role here and, uh. Like you say, the a lot of the other municipalities are experiencing the same kind of things as us, so. Anyone else have anything to add there? Seeing nothing. Oh, okay, Counselor Clapham?
Yeah, um, one of the breakout sessions that I found very helpful was about being investment ready. It was led by Leanne Hackman-Carty, the CEO of, uh, Economic Developers of Alberta. As well as the other presenter. Um, Angela Groenfeld from Strathmore and Rick Christian of Invest Alberta. Uh, and it really was just highlighting being investment ready, um, if we're going to want to move towards these things about. Um. Investors are looking for readiness, you know, infrastructure, workforce, utilities. And clarity is why to, why they should be there, um. The, uh, spokesperson from Strathmore just went through one of these, uh, things about data centers. I had a couple of things and one is incentives don't work and number two, don't say because you're the best place in the province to live. Um, to be serious with, uh, what you are presenting. Um. Uh, some of the talk was around data centers, which is a big thing right now. It diverted a little bit from the Alberta government's thoughts right now about supplying energy. They they reinforced about renewables that a lot of these companies are looking for them. The one neat tool that came out of this is the Economic Developers of Alberta. Launched last April, a community investment readiness assessment tool. And it's something that as members, I know Reg is a member, um, where it'll take ten pillars, twenty-nine dimensions. Show where to improve and then also sort of track so you can see. If you're living up to these things that, you know, something as big as Invest Alberta who's done. Uh, I've got province attracted seventy-two billion in my notes, but I didn't say whether that was this year or over the last ten years or whatnot. So that was a really good one. Um, in the trade show, I learned about the Yatko Energy Fund. It's, uh, they say, they're telling me it's this new grant or whatever. But I, when I looked on the website, it's been about three years. And it's up to fifteen thousand for energy audits, improvements, efficiencies. So when we're thinking about the bridge improvement. With the walkway and the solar lights, this would fall right into it. Um, it might be something that'd be worthwhile. Another highlight was that, uh. Uh, we did meet with Alberta Transportation and had good discussions on Highway five seventy-five as well as sort of rightsizing the Wayne Bridge. And the other, I think, real positive piece was the media coverage on very two important issues. Directly from Drumheller about either visitor levies or equalization of real. Utility charges for rural areas, so to me, those were all really good successes for the community, for us, uh, being there.
Thanks for that, counselor. Uh, that was, uh, I was, I was there at that thing and we, they. We took a lot of thing things away. Uh, one of the things that you're talking about was being investment ready and, uh, just share with everybody that. You know, opened the KFC up there yesterday and, uh, that was one of the things that the president of the company said to me was that our, our, uh. Our, our situation, our, our development plan there, that's the fastest they've ever gotten. Uh, uh, one of their franchises opened up is nine months. Uh, that their typical, uh, their typical time is a year to a year plus in some, uh, municipalities. And he said that ours, uh, he said kudos to Reg and the team there because, uh, it was a real. Smooth operation, so. So, yeah, I just thought I'd throw that out there too. All right, so are we gonna go with all and pardon me? Okay, so Counselor McNeil?
Okay, well, um, I just wanted to, um, share the highlight for me from that conference. And, uh, certainly also I agree with Counselors Risky that this event was just, uh, very energizing. So I felt, uh, quite exhilarated about the role ahead and certainly, yeah, recognizing it's daunting. Um, but, uh, I just felt that this conference just offered so many pluses. And I guess one of the highlights for me, what I wanted to share was from a session that was all about family, community and support services. And, um, there was this session where I heard from, uh, the president, Kayla Blanchett. The president of the FCSS Association of Alberta. As well on FCSS Program Director from Sherwood Park. And Dana Mackey from the Alberta Municipalities Conference, or sorry, the Association. And what I found is, um, certainly I learned a great deal, but, uh, you know, in general, just for everyone to understand. It is a partnership with the province of Alberta. So the government of Alberta funds FCSS to the tune of eighty percent. And the remaining twenty percent is then funded by the municipality. And, um, overall, FCSS programs, they are designed locally. They are a focus on in early intervention, community involvement, and then long-term well-being. And, um, overall, I heard about, um, a lot of work that's underway. With respect to advocating for FCSS programs and, uh, some of this, this was a previous resolution. Uh, but it looks like, uh, you know, there's some positive movement to support, um. The growing population in our province and then as well to index for inflation. So essentially more funding for FCSS programs across the province. So hopeful that that will happen, very valuable for communities across our province.
Thank you, Counselor McNeil. Anybody else? Make sure I look both ways. Counselor Miller?
Yeah, the conference was definitely very, very useful and it was very timely to have it right after getting elected. Because I did learn a lot that I was able to bring back. Um, the resolutions were very, very interesting because I got to see firsthand where municipalities have a voice. I did stand up to speak for one and there wasn't anyone to speak against me by the time I got on the mic, so I didn't actually have a chance to speak. But, uh. It also underscored for me, or what I perceived to be a great challenge for the provincial government. Because they're dealing with what the federal government gives them on the one hand and then also all of the municipalities on the other hand. They're kind of sandwiched in between two levels of government. I think that would be. That would be challenging. And, uh. Yeah, I made it, I I did my best to speak with at least a handful of counselors from other municipalities every day. Cause we spent a lot of time together, but it was very valuable to talk to other people and see what was going on with them as well. And then one of the. Workshops that I attended was called Consequences. The Unexpected Consequences of Good Ideas. And it was talking about. How municipalities should operate as asset managers, which means planning ahead. As much as your budget allows to manage assets, purchase them and maintain them as opposed to operating as facility managers who. Find problems and fix them as they go and the last several sessions of budgeting, we've been looking at. Developing an asset management plan and getting more on the ball with that, which is. The direction that this workshop recommended councils to move in. And then they also. Talked about, they, uh, they gave several examples too of how municipalities can be a little bit. Um. Creative when it comes to asset procuration. And some examples that they gave were, if it makes sense for your municipality. Consider using service providers, taking into consideration that you'll lose a level of control and and what will be the return on investment. And they also en- encouraged intermuni- intermunicipal collaboration. And used examples of municipalities working with their neighbors to get a discounted price on bulk purchases of. Parking meters and I I didn't keep notes on which municipalities this were, but these were. But that was one of the ones they talked about as well as buying. Used vehicles from other municipalities for discounts. Um, there was an example where one municipality needed four. I can't remember if it was trucks or graders or what, cause I didn't note that down. But they ended up buying seven and then using the extra ones as parts. Because they were something that would be hard to get new parts for, but they were able to buy extras of them. So I just, yeah, thought it was very interesting and obviously we won't be able to incorporate everything. Cause some, some of the tips were meant for larger or for smaller municipalities, but it's really good to hear what other people are doing.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. It was enlightening in a whole lot of different ways, wasn't it? Yeah. All right, anything else from anybody? No, we're all good. Okay, so then all in favor of that motion? Okay, carried. All right, so now we're on to our. Our CIO update. Okay. Okay. All right, so we got a CIO update for our intergovernmental relations, um. The ATIA twenty-eight local public body confidences, ATIA twenty-nine advice from officials. So we will now move on to item five point one, uh, closed session. Can I get a motion to go into closed session, please? Counselor Clapham, thank you. Can I get a second or?
Well, I I'll move that the committee closed the meeting to the public at five oh nine PM to discuss, uh. CIO update, uh, intergovernmental relations as per ATIA twenty-eight local body confidences. And A, uh, ATIA twenty-nine advice from officials.
Thank you. Can I get a second or? Counselor Zirsky? Thank you. All in favor? Okay. Sorry, Carrie, the committee will now, will not be discussing any other business following closed session. Thanks to everyone who attended in person and watched online and have a great night. Can I? That's good. Okay, I'll shut up right now.